Good morning and welcome to the October 23rd, 2024 City Council Meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation of Councilmember McKeller, followed by the pledge, if you'll please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you bow your heads and even close your eyes and pray with me? Father of our silent tears, God of our weary years, we come just now thanking you so much for today, this beautiful day, and waking us up and starting us on another day's journey. And Father, we say thank you. We thank you so much for our mayor and our council. We thank you so much for our city manager. We thank you so much for our city attorney and all of those who serve this great community in the city of Tyler, Texas. We say thank you for the opportunity to serve, Father. And so, we thank you for prosperity. We thank you for health. We thank you for a good mind, and that you woke us up this morning and started us on another day's journey, and we say thank you. And now, Father, as we begin our day in the work for the city of Tyler and our community, but not just the city of Tyler, not just our community, but we say, Father, bless this state, bless this country. And Father, as we embark aboard an election year, we ask you to be with us, guide us, put unity in our community. And Father, now, we say thank you, and in Jesus' name we pray. And let my Father's children say amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deborah, do we not have any minutes to approve from the last meeting?
No.
Okay. All right, we're going to come down for some awards. All right, we've got four service awards, and they total over 100 years of service in the city of Tyler. And we'll start with Mary Johnson, 130 years of service. And next, we have Eder Tremble, CFO, 25 years of service. Now, before I say this, is this 20 years of service, is this combined or two years of service? One of years of service. And the 100 years of service is from people that all over the city, do all different kinds of things, and you're paying. And, of course, Stephanie, actually. And I just really, I think, all of the work you do, and your long-term service, and your loyalty to the city, and just being a mentor to all of the young people who are coming to work for the city. So, you know, showing the best. But now, we have Brandon, ready to work program. And there are several people who are retired. And the first one we have is Beth Blake, five months of service. And last, we have Bonnie Funnell, six months of service. You know, this program has been so successful, and I would review. Thank you for the guardians program, because these things are special. And to thank the moms, your kids, sweetest fathers. Can I see that chip?
You did it.
No.
Oh, because you did it.
Kyle, y'all gonna have any more chips than baby? You ever gonna have any more chips?
Sheesh. Cleared the room. Okay. Because you can bring one up to her.
But not be in here.
So evidently, those people that just left don't want to see good government at work. All right, we're going to move on to A3. Kyle, are you going to talk about A3?
Yes, sir, really quick. So, good morning, Mayor and Council. This first, or A3, is a request that the City Council consider accepting the certificate of achievement for planning excellence from the American Planning Association, Texas Chapter. This is the 10th year that the city has been, or has received this recognition. It's a recognition of the professional planning standards by the city's planning staff and the support exhibited by the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. We do have representatives from our commission here this morning. Like I said, this is the 10th year that we have received this from the APA Texas Chapter, and so we want to thank the City Council for your continued support for planning initiatives. And we presented this earlier this morning, so just like to share that with you all.
Any comments for Kyle?
Just congratulations.
Yes, sir. Congratulations. I'd say the same thing. We've got two or three commissioners back there, and I served on the planning commission, gosh, 10, 11 years, 12 years ago, many years ago. And it's just, it's essential to make everything work. So, thank you, guys and ladies, for what you've done. Kyle, thank you, we appreciate you. So. All right, Z1.
All right, so Z1 is a request for a site plan amendment for a property that's owned P U R, Plan Unit Residential. This is off of Crook and Trail, Dalton Lane. This is, you see here, just north of Cumberland Road and Broadway. The property is owned P U R. There's no significant changes to the layout of the property or any of the conditions that were approved a couple of years ago, or maybe, I think it might have been last year. And the request here is to essentially phase the development. When it was approved, it was approved as a, as a single phase, so everything would be developed at one time. I'm not sure if the applicant or the developer intended to actually, to do that all at once, or that might have been an oversight, but as they get further into the reality of the development, they have proposed to split it into four phases, as you see here, where they, and the site plan does stipulate that all the phases would be done in sequential order by numbers, so 1, 2, 3, and 4. And all the conditions that were adopted with the prior approval are still in place. With staff review this, this layout, they, we do find that the, all the required, you know, infrastructure, and more specifically, the required stubouts to the north and south are appropriately phased with the Phase 1 and the Phase 3. So each time, you know, the southern area is developed, that will be, you know, provided by the developer. On the north side, the same thing. All staff has reviewed the application and did not, it does not anticipate any impact from this proposed change to the site plan. We did notify neighbors of the request to phase the development. We received some in favor to the request, none in opposition. I think mainly the feedback was that the development should still maintain all the criteria or the conditions that were in place on it in the first place, which is still the case. And so, the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Move to approve Z1. Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Z2.
This is a request for a zone change from light industrial to single-family. This is on Anderson Avenue. The property is currently developed with a single-family home. It was developed as such when the zoning allowed for that. Now that it's, now the applicant's looking to make some modifications to the home or to bring it into compliance with the zoning. They do require this, the zone change, and so that's the purpose of the change. The area is largely, you know, largely single-family or two-family, it's a residential area, so this is consistent with that. The Plan Commission by a unanimous vote recommended approval of this request.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z2.
Yeah, can.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This is a request for a site plan amendment for a PMXD1 planned mixed-use district zoning. This is on Arbor Ridge and Oak Hill Boulevard. And as you can see here, the property is currently, currently is owned PMXD1. It was owned this way in 2022. When it was approved in '22, it was for a four, allowance for a four-story building with 45 residential units at density of 30 units per acre, so a larger, or more dense development. Now, the applicant's requesting to reduce that down to, or down to a density of 13 units per acre and three stories. As you see, the area is mixed, a mixture of uses. You do have fresh and those other uses to the south, and then office uses to the north and east, all commercial area. This area is shown as a mixed use, so this is still consistent with that. This is the, these are the two properties that are subject to the rezoning. There is a shared, or a private street that does cut through the middle of this, and that is shown on the site plan as off-site, but the development, or the approval, the zoning is for what's on these two properties. Here's the site plan that's being proposed, and you see that they are essentially town home units at much lower density than what was previously approved. Also, the parking is essentially internal to the development. Prior to that, it was kind of at the front of the development along Highland Boulevard or Highland Lane. So you see off-site, they, you know, that is like a shared or a private driveway, there is parking off of that. My understanding that there were still some discussions with some of the neighbors and the applicant about how that would look off-site with parking in that private street. But what I want, want to convey today is that the approval is what's on these two properties. So what you see here, you know, essentially in the green areas, that's what's being approved for this, this request. As you see here, the property there. So, when we did provide public notice, we did receive a return opposition from the properties there in red, which is over 20, 21% of opposition. Like I mentioned before, my understanding was that there might have been still some conversations, but the concern from that, that party was what happens in that private street, you know, how the parking works for that. And so, maybe there's still some discussions happening. I think the applicant is here, and they can speak to that. With the protest calculation exceeding 20%, it would require a three-quarters majority to approve this request. The Plan Commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle before we get to the cards? None? All right, Casey Heimer, you want to come up? You state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Casey Heimer, 11621 County Road, 166. I'm the owner of the, what's in the red there, and we're developers, we're pro-development, and our only opposition to this site plan is that it utilizes land that we own. We have not, we didn't sign any plan development action or application related to this request. And so, as owner of what's in red, which is part of the site plan, we're opposed to this, and our concerns are that they're applying for a site plan amendment that doesn't have full ownership support, and it's deleting parking that is supposed to be there for shared use for everyone. And so, that's, that's our concern. And we were out of town, weren't able to make P and Z, and so, wish we could have caught it then, but weren't able to make that meeting. But that's our concern, is for the limited amount of parking that everyone utilizes for that whole, whole development. And we didn't oppose the previous site plan or the current site plan because it had that parking, and now it's gone away, or a few spots are shown as future, but that's, that's our only opposition.
Can we go back to that site plan? Yeah, that. So you're saying you own the part that's right in the middle?
That's right. Yeah, that was in red on the, the previous, yes, so where the driveway is, all the way around it.
Casey, have you reached out to the co-owner and tried to work out future parking or reach an agreement?
That applicant, or?
Yes.
We've met multiple times over the last two years.
What about recently?
We've not, not recently.
So have you agreed to any of this in the past during your meetings?
We've stated repeatedly that as long as there's parking consistent with the rest of the development, and I have an aerial that we could throw up, but if you're familiar, it's, you know, everything around Fresh. All the parking is for everyone, the shared use is off-site, and so it's, it's in that common area, and this site plan doesn't, doesn't have, have that consistent with everything else. And so, that's our only, only concern and objection. And as, you know, landowner of part of what's being approved on a site plan, we're not, we're not in agreement with this site plan.
If y'all were able to reach an agreement on shared access and shared parking, would you then be in favor of?
Yes.
What's proposed?
All right, any other questions for Mr. Heimer before I call up Mr. Priestner? Okay, thank you. Mark, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Priestner, 1121 East Southeast Loop, 323. As Kyle pointed out, this is a reduction from what was originally approved. What was originally approved included this, the drive through the center as part of the gated, you know, parking for the development. Mr. Heimer is, they are part owners. It's owned jointly by Trek Resources and Drake. J.P. Davis is the other owner. He owns all the rest of the rights of way other than the section. So even though Casey is, is opposing this, J.P. is in favor of it. So really, that, the calculation in the protest, it is a joint ownership of that, of that access easement. So when we went in and redeveloped the site plan, it was because we couldn't come to agreement on closing that off. So we left it open, left the additional parking. It's, it's open for full access, and the gates come off of that. So it's going back to the original on how that thing was laid out originally. There, because of the reduction in the number of units, there is still, there's plenty of parking. This whole area has shared parking, and it's parked in the aggregate, and there's plenty of parking all the way around. So we felt that this is a good use, you know, the intention was always to have some kind of higher-density residential in there, something that's complementary to the Copper Ridge Unit 1, and trying to get it in there, but still meet all of the intensity of the original PCV. Since we laid out the original, this is keeping, in keeping with the entire Fresh Area Development Plan. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
If we were to give y'all 30 days to work out the disagreement with that shared area, would that, that wouldn't change anything with the other two tracks, would it?
I don't think so, but what I want to point out, that shared area is just an access easement. It's an easement on, on, that includes drive and parking. So what's shown in there is exactly what's written in that access easement. So it's, it's already in keeping exactly with what was proposed there in the beginning.
So you're saying there is an easement on that section?
Yeah, because it's a, it's a private, this is one of those, these were done in private ways, and so they have, so if you, you look at, you can see the property that that's kind of down to the south, it comes up and across, and then it comes out that section. And those are, they have easement on it for access and parking, and that's what is shown on the property.
Did the number of spots change?
From?
Or less?
Yeah, there's nothing on it right now. It's, it's not built at all.
Right. So did the number of assigned parking spaces?
No, there are no assigned parking spots through there. It's all open. So it was intended to be based, so the parking would come as the uses come. So depending on what originally on that corner we were looking or thinking, a three- or four-story office building, which would have required more parking. So it was kind of set up in a way to be sort of flexible, depending on what those final uses are. But under this one, we have a lot less parking demand because of what, what they end up, the final use is.
So who signed the easement?
Trek, Trek has the, had the original. When Casey and, when they, when Drake bought the building that, that you can see this one right here, they took over half ownership of those access easements, but they were already in place prior to them purchasing.
So any questions for Mark or Casey?
I would like to give Casey an opportunity to, if he has any response to the easement, because there's still a lot of things to question about.
Yes, so the easement's not the issue. So the, the current site plan that's approved, which I have, I don't know if I can, I can put it up there, but.
Should we go grab some of that breakfast back there and come back? Yeah, so the current site plan that was passed around, it's highlighted, running houses along, along the shared drive aisle here and here.
There's, there's parking on the current site plan, which is, which is consistent with the remainder of the development, and, and the new site plan does not have that parking there. And so, our concern is that all these buildings, they don't self-park on their own site, although there's a gem there, the Brookshires Wildlife Museum is going in there, and so we rely on all that shared parking. There's some vacant retail space that if that ever gets leased up, parking's going to be extremely tight. And so, taking away those spots along that, that shared drive aisle, we feel like is going to be a problem for the remainder of the owners in there. So it's not the access through that. We're very aware that when we, you know, bought half this property, undivided interest, that, that that's an access easement. But the intention was for there to be parking all along the shared, the shared access for the use of everyone.
Casey, how many total spots would be eliminated?
Well, what's, well, I don't, whatever there should be where, where I was just pointing the mouse, that's on the highlighted copy, I don't, I don't know how many spots that was, 20? I don't know. But, but essentially, they're not there now, but there's, there's also no, there's no buildings there. And so, adding building and traffic and users, and then not adding the spots that were, that would have been there if there had been an office building or a retail building, is the concern.
Any other questions for Casey?
So yeah, so the number of spots is not going, it's not going down, like y'all asked him if it was going down. It's not going down, but there's no buildings there. But it would be going down from what's currently approved, the current approved site plan. So.
So then, what I'm seeing is in the common area, if we might call it, back towards, right in that area, by eliminating those public spots, we've now moved them inside this development, and it's gated. So we've removed it, parking, because with this current development plan, all the parking places are now behind a gate.
Well, there's, there's no gate there, so, but they, instead of there being parking all the way along the, the common area, even, even out to Highlands Drive, they only added 11 spots, which was to get them to their code.
Right.
To their required, they've got 42 garage spots, and then they put, I think it's 11 spots outside of their gates on the shared access. What we're asking for is them to continue the parking that is in place for all the other buildings along the shared access.
So who owns the property where the parking spots are located?
The, the common area. It's, well, it's, so Trek and.
Wait, this, this part? So this section, is it going? Oh, there we go. by eliminating those public spots, we've now moved them inside this development, and it's gated. So we've removed it, parking, because with this current development plan, all the parking places are now behind a gate.
Well, there's, there's no gate there, so, but they, instead of there being parking all the way along the common area, even out to Highlands Drive, they only added 11 spots, which was to get them to their code.
Right.
To their required, they've got 42 garage spots, and then they put, I think it's 11 spots outside of their gates on the shared access. What we're asking for is them to continue the parking that is in place for all the other buildings along the shared access.
So who owns the property where the parking spots are located?
The common area, it's, well, it's, so Trek and...
Wait, this, this part? So this section, is it going, oh, there we go, okay. Okay, there we go. So this part through this section is not, that is not owned by the common area. That is, the property line goes to the center, that's not covered by the easement. This section, whoops, the other section. This section, we have provided for the ability to add that back in. So that section along there is part of that easement, and those can be added back in. This part is not part of the easement, and there is no easement on that for parking. And that is owning the center line, because the property's owned directly out. So it is not part of the joint venture of Trek and Drake.
Which one's the current?
And I know y'all don't get into...
Or is this the current?
The one that's up on the screen is.
That's the current one. This one?
Yeah, that's current, yeah. So that, that's your apartment.
Paper, right. This is the component.
And there's existing parking where he was just highlighting that is in part of their property line. And I know y'all don't get into ECR, but the ECR is, basically, that's shared parking for everyone to use. And so this site plan shows that going away, and then not adding those. So again, the current site plan, we were fine with, because the parking was there. This one, we're not.
My personal opinion, I think this is something that both developers need to work out. If it's up to me, I say we table it for 30 days, make sure in time to get them, where they can sit down and begin their talk.
Hi, I'm the developer.
What's your name and address?
My name is Sherri Caton, I'm at Caton Property Group, 2931 Elton Trail, Tyler, Texas 75703. We did add future parking, but we will go ahead and approve it with you guys' approval that we will put the parking back in, as shown on this site plan. Instead of future, it will be permanent parking, and we will add that parking back in. That parking is not there right now, but we will add that parking in order to get this passed today. And also, I wanted to make note that the easement, the drive-through is not gated, so it's open to anyone who wants to come through there. And that parking is also open to anyone in the whole entire Fresh Oak Hills Development to park there anytime they want. Of course, that was added for our guest parking needed requirements, but I don't know how often the guest parking will actually be utilized. So of course, that is open to anyone in the whole entire development. So we've actually added 11 parking spaces there for the development to use. And we are agreeable to go ahead and take away future parking, and go ahead and add that parking right there. So that's really the only thing I can think of.
Well, that's not an ECR, what those parks are.
Well, we can't speak from out of the crowd.
Does that make sense?
Where's the current site plan?
The current site plan, the city had approved blocking off that easement, and we had a swing.
No, I was just asking where the current site plan was, physically.
I'm not a big fan of us negotiating this out in public. It'd be nice if we can just...
Motion to table it for 30 days?
Yes, yes. My preference.
Table it?
Yes.
We just, we just need to calm down in 30 days, and if somebody will make that motion.
I don't know why they, unless you made it.
Second. Who's second is this? Okay, we got a motion by Handie, second by Hawkins, to table this for 30 days. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Y'all get together and see if we can figure this out. Appreciate y'all.
And because of the way that this calendar's working out, if we can be able to get this back to y'all before the 30 days, assuming that your council's fine with that, it's your next council meeting.
Oh yeah, tell me of one meeting.
Yes. One meeting in November, and they'll have one meeting in December. And so we'll see if, like I said, if it can resolve and brought y'all back to you if your November meeting, we'll most definitely do so.
Yeah.
Should the tabling request be to the next meeting?
Yes.
At the earliest?
So we need to modify the motion, Rob?
Just for public notice, I think.
According to the parliamentarian here.
So will you provide?
So revised motion is to table this until the next council meeting in November, which is feared in 30 days.
Okay, we got a motion, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Z4.
This last request is a zone change from R1B Single Family to M1 Light Industrial District. This is on East Commerce Street. As you see here, the property is zoned for single-family, is surrounded largely by industrial zoning to the north, south, to the east as well. And then there's some pockets of R1B to the east, and then single-family to the west. Many of those properties to the north and south and the east are developed with industrial uses. A body shop, which is to the east, and then there is a home to the northeast there. And then to the west, there is a single-family home. This request is consistent with the Tyler First Future Land Use Guide, shown as light industrial. The applicant's requesting the zoning to develop a machine shop on the property, I suspect, and a portion of the property, but they are reselling the entire, these two tracks to industrial. As you see, you can see the current form of development in that area. The Unified Development Code would require a type-C buffer yard where adjacent to single-family zoned property, which is one of these options here, which is with a fence and trees, or a 30-foot area with a berm, or a 55, or a 50-foot wide area, essentially to mitigate the difference between a single-family home and any other uses are allowed within M1. There's also a 25-foot required setback for any building adjacent to the residential, residentially zoned properties to the west and the east. This request went before the Planning and Zone Commission, and at that meeting, there was a concern from the neighbor to the west, who has a home on that property. They were concerned about the allowable uses within M1. And at that time, the applicant did not state at least clearly what they planned to do with the property. So that this request was denied by the Planning Commission by a 70 vote, largely because it appeared at that time that the request was speculative. There was no intentional use at that time. Since then, the applicant has appealed that request, and has clarified that they plan to have a machine shop on this property. I'm not sure how large they plan to have that, and where they plan to put it on the property, but I believe they may be here to speak to that. And so, like I mentioned, this request was denied by the Planning Commission, and the applicant has appealed that request.
Can you go back to the area? So what houses are there?
There's one house to the west, at the northern, oh, I can do this, right here. And then there is a house here, but it is, I think it's...
Is it still residential?
I believe so, I'm not sure. There is a body shop business attached or nearby and surrounding that. So I believe it's the same owner that owns the body shop and the house, so it may be an office at this point, I'm not sure. But there is one house here, and if I go back to the zoning map, you can see that, well, A, it is, it is consistent with the land use guide. And you do have actually more intense industrial north of, north of that area here, the M2, so.
And the people that were in the houses got the notification, and they're fine with it?
The people that got the house, or the guy that got the notification that live here were concerned about it. They did not return anything in opposition. They, at the meeting, they indicated that they were concerned about what types of uses would be allowed. They were concerned about kind of the worst-case scenario, which is, I think they mentioned like a rocket manufacturing plant. But M1 is, it's limited to kind of warehouse uses and some light assemblies. So a machine shop is kind of something you'd expect to see, or some type of warehouse.
Kyle, staff looked at the zoning change, and staff was for this because it's part of the land use guide. Do we know if the applicant, since he's identified what he plans to use for the property, has reached back out to that one neighbor that was concerned?
I don't know. I don't know if they have, but they may be here today.
The applicant, I believe, is here, if y'all would like to ask any questions of the applicant.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
It's Ralph Brown, it's 4296 County Road 427, 75708.
Mr. Brad, have you reached out to the resident that was concerned what your plans were for the property?
Mr. James, no, I did not.
Okay, and, but you have identified what you are going to do with the property?
Yes, we actually do a lot of business with the business across the street, ST Fastening, and we build machines for them, so it really is just a light industrial. We have a machine shop, and having them across the street would definitely help us. And we'd like to expand the business and maybe hire a few more people, you know, using them across the street. It just, you know, opened up, and it'd be a great opportunity for us.
Is it to build on both of the properties, six and seven?
Right now, right now, we're just using the one side. And then the other side, the further house, that's a gravel and body shop. So I'm not sure, I think they live on the property. I went and spoke with them, and they're like, we have no problem. I'm not sure if they returned the letter.
I see six and seven, block six and seven.
Oh, on six.
It's where you plan to build.
Yes, that's the larger property.
But you understand all the setbacks that you'd have to?
Yes.
All right, any other questions?
Move to approve Z4.
We got a motion by Winn, second by Mike Keller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Good luck with your project.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, M1, Paul.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning, Mayor.
I'm Paul Newhouse, stormwater management and environmental compliance engineer, here to talk to you about the Keaton Avenue drainage improvements. Just a quick little refresher, because we started the design on this project back in '23. And this, this area has had problems with stormwater since at least 2016. We've got a creek that collects runoff from approximately 248 acres. Keaton itself is overtopped, and has been overtopped. In heavy rain events, water runs down the street, binds its way back into the channel south of Shepherd, I'll show you a map in just a second. There's been reported flooding of one home and multiple properties. There's erosion issues in a natural channel, and sinkholes have been, have occurred along the improved channel between Shepherd and Windwood. This next slide shows the drainage area, the larger drainage area in the outer red, and then the smaller drainage area that we're targeting is the more purple-looking line there in the center, and then our project area is there in the blue. The improvements that we are targeting are all highlighted here. The pink line is Keaton, but this is where it's overtopped. So this is where we are proposing to run some stormwater boxes tying back into the channel here. We will have to do these channel improvements down to Windwood. Part of those improvements also include this channel here from Frye in the yellow. And then the natural channel that's existing is here in the pink. We propose to do some improvements where they've got some erosion issues behind these three homes that face Keaton right there. When we bid this project, we had an EOPC estimated opinion of probable cost of $4 to $4.5 million, which is, was a little higher than what we started. When we started designing, we were about 3.8. But the project expanded a little bit as we felt that some of the challenges we had were necessary to be overcome with some additional work. And when we advertised and opened bids, we had two bids from qualified contractors. We had a bid from True Roads Construction for $6.1 million, and Reynolds &amp; Kay for $4.4 million. And that includes the, when we bid the project, we had an out alternate for the natural channel because we weren't 100% sure if we were going to do that, but that really needs to be done. So those totals reflect both of those options. So before I hop to the next slide, I'll pause for any questions?
Can you go back to your drawing?
This one?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So at the end of the project, down there on, I guess that's Windwood?
Yes, sir. Right down here.
So that going on, flowing away, that's not going to create any...
That's, that's what the study by Langen and their subcontractor Cardinal has shown, is that there's adequate capacity in that downstream channel.
Any other questions for Paul?
Yeah, Paul, is the, is the design, I thought at one time, maybe still is, is it going to go under Keaton?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The darker pink there, that's where we're going to open up Keaton and put two reinforced concrete boxes in there. There were a lot of utilities, we've got sewer lines, sewers crossing from one side to the other, the water lines. So we're going to open it up, and like we did on South Thompson, we're going to go ahead and replace those utilities that are in the street, so that when we close it back up, we should be good with Keaton.
Man, the people in this neighborhood would tell you this is very much needed and has been, so I'm glad we're taking care of it. And getting it done is going to be a real challenge. How, how are we going to accommodate those folks on that street while this is happening?
We, the, we've got two people on Frye, right here, that have, will be granting us temporary construction access easements. One of them has a driveway that goes almost all the way that is channeled. The other one is two-thirds, three-quarters of the way there. So we'll be able to access the Windwood channel from there. And then I've, as part of the update that I sent to the citizens after we awarded this, we're going to be closing Shepherd from Bain up to the, these are the blocks right here, up to their driveway, because there's really no place to put equipment, to stockpile any type of inventory. And, and there's, obviously, with all the streets around there, there's access in and around that without a problem.
I think we're brash getting...
What about Keaton?
Oh, Keaton?
Yeah.
Well, that is going to be like we did on Stagecoach. When you open that road up, you're going to have to make sure that they can, they can get across those trenches. There'll be plates, I mean, every day, that's going to have to be that access every night. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast when we do work like this. There will definitely be some inconveniences.
Sure, absolutely, there will be. The, and how about, you mentioned notification. Are we going to kind of let these people know, hey, this is getting ready to start happening?
That is correct, and that's what I, what I did last week. I let everybody know the results of the bids, told them about closing that street. We had some meetings early on with the residents. We talked about, you know, just staging and how it was going to work. So we will definitely need to have another, at least one meeting to kind of bring them up to speed and tell them how we're going to do that. We anticipate starting work after the first, right, get past all the holidays and everything. There'll probably be some preliminary work. We've got to take down some trees and do some vegetative kind of stuff, so that'll happen before the end of the year to kind of set the stage. And then really, because when we start this, you can't really stop. I mean, it's going to have to be something that's just full, full speed and nonstop if possible.
Paul, best-case scenario timeline?
The, the estimated completion is by, is, in the contract, is by the end of the year. So we are going to give them almost 360 days, 365 days to complete the project. And it's going to have to be staged, right? They'll, they'll most likely start with the natural channel, because you want the downstream part ready for the upstream part. So I don't know exactly when they'll be starting to demo Keaton and starting that work, but it will be a little bit later in the year.
Well, as Brad said, this is long overdue, and I feel sorry for these residents that are going to have the inconvenience, but at the end of the day, problems will be solved.
It'll be better.
I would just hope that the contractor and us as a city keep a real open line of communication with the people along Keaton especially.
Well, this is the same contractor that did Cambridge, so I think we...
This is your district, correct, Brad?
Correct.
Brad Curtis, it's your district here, isn't it?
Quick, quick question, Paul. The southern part behind Frye Avenue, you've got that step ladder look. Is that underground because of the step ladder look on it?
Oh, the, no, no, that's all an open channel. The only, the only part, yes, the only part that will be underground, there's nothing underground right now, will be what runs down Keaton.
We got a motion for...
Move to approve M1.
Okay, got a motion by Curtis, second by Keller, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, do we want to approve as written?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Winn, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. All right. City managers report, I almost cut you out.
I wouldn't have been crying. Mayor and council, a few items of note. Our Tyler Sister Cities collected $1,300 in donations to be transferred to Hellenia Gora, Poland, which is one of our main sister cities that we have, to support the relief efforts for the victims of the flooding that the city experienced in September. And so the Sister Cities Board of Directors voted to remove the donation link from the website and transfer the collected funds. And so Tyler's been Sister Cities with Hellenia Gora since 1993, and the relationship continues to be strong today. And we had all the library staff over here earlier, but I want to kind of brag on them a little bit. Tyler Public Library has partnered with our Animal Control Department to help with this shelter's current needs. Jammer Smith reached out to the, who works over at the library, reached out to Animal Control to understand their needs for blankets and went to work. They put out a press release and established a process for intake over at the library. The library has two bins in front of the checkout desk for blanket donations, which has been seeing a great response from patrons after only a few days. Another item of note that the council has taken action on, and it's kind of an EPA mandate that we have, has been on our water service line inventory. So on October 16th, a week ago, Tyler Water Utilities completed and submitted the water service line inventory as required by the EPA. The inventory identified 142, which is 0.37% lead lines, 3,843, which is 9.91% galvanized lines that may require replacement, and then 4,390, which is about 11.32% lines of unknown materials that will require further investigations. And so customers with lead service lines, galvanized steel lines, or service lines of unknown material will be notified by mail by Friday, November 15th. This week, we're also going to release a press release and interactive map in English and Spanish, and set up media interviews on this topic. We also want to thank Jeremy Priest and Holly Walt with GIS for their hard work in quickly putting together their interactive map. We also have a big thank you to the Water Service Center employees themselves for manually investigating the majority of these lines and going out there. Without their effort, we would not be able to have met that deadline. And then finally, just want to note, Visit Tyler announced last week, and we are thrilled to be part of this, that Tyler is the third tourism-friendly city-certified community for the state of Texas. Governor Abbott's office notified us of that, and I'm very proud of the work that Visit Tyler. I know our downtown, our Main Street staff are here today, and just, and also, you know, our park staff, and so many others that do such an incredible job of making this a tourist donation, a destination. And for, we'll also take donations, but a tourist destination for Texas. And so we're glad that the state recognizes that. Many of the cities are putting together the information to get that forward, and the fact that we were able to be the third one designated speaks highly of our community.
I think it deserves a hand. All right, we are going to go into executive session. I don't know if we're going to have any action or how long it's going to take, so feel free to stick around if you'd like. It's allowed by the Texas Open Meetings Law, Chapter 551 of the Government Code. The City Council may go into executive session to consider the following. Executive Session 1, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, litigation to deliberate pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer involved involving Jason Hall versus City of Tyler. And Session, or Executive Session Number 2, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, litigation to deliberate pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offering, offer involving Liberty Utilities Corporation, Tall Timber Sewer, and Liberty Utilities Corporation, Woodmark Sewer versus City of Tyler in Real City Municipal Utility District. So we'll be back here in a little while. Enjoy your time.
We're back.
Is that Brad? He should come back for lunch after.
Oh, okay. You can make all of mine up right now, because they're all-
Where'd our fans go? Smart, loud fans. We've got police here. That's good. That guy was still here.
And it is on air right now, so.
We are on air?
My government's are working.
Did the doctor claim more than that?
Wow, it's cold in here.
It feels good.
Here she comes. Here she comes. Casey, you up there? All right, y'all ready to go back there?
What are we in?
All right, we are back from executive session, and we do have two action items. The first is I will entertain a motion to approve the settlement agreement for the Jason Hall versus City of Tyler lawsuit, cause number 23-0270-C, in the amount of $80,000.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. The second item is I will entertain a motion to approve the settlement agreement between the City of Tyler and Liberty Utilities, also known as Tall Timbers and Woodmark Sewer.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. There's no further action, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned.